Good evening. I would like to call the May 22nd, 2018 meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. We will start with the roll call. Ms. Thomas?
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Weisman?
Here.
Mrs. Sims?
Here.
Mrs. Pardini?
Here.
Mr. Erdl?
Here.
Mrs. Cameron?
Present.
Mrs. Wise?
Here.
All are present. Please rise if you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the approval of the minutes. This would be the minutes from the May 7th meeting of City Council. Is there a motion? Mr. Rock?
I have a comment on page 1. Third line down says, "Mrs. Pardini noted that on page 6 the words should be read," commented. That was my comment, so we should change that to Mr. Rock.
Okay. So noted. Any further changes or additions? Is there a motion?
They're not making a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, there is a motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Rock as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sims. Is there any discussion? Sing none, Ms. Thomas. We call the vote.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. This is now the time. A portion of the meeting dedicated for comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes. A total time allotted to 15 minutes per meeting. We generally relax that to hear from the public. If there's anyone here who would wish to address us, please feel free to come to the podium, use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Well, if there are no comments, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. Since our last meeting, we had a neighborhood meeting on Sillsby to meet with neighbors of the site of the new pocket park to discuss the latest sketches. Those sketches are here in Chambers over there, and they are also available for viewing on the city website. I attended the mayor's and manager's meeting in Columbus two weeks ago today, or I'm sorry, one week ago today, to discuss issues of importance to our city with state leaders. We held the Heritage Home Meeting here in Chambers last Thursday, and it was standing room only for the presentation. There was a lot of interest in the program, both in seeking free expert advice in rehabbing and repairing our homes and in the below-market interest financing programs available. If you missed the program, information can be found at www HEROCHOMEPROGRAM.org, and specific questions can be answered by calling (216) 426-3116. Thank you to Trudy Andruski for her engaging and informative presentation. University Heights is a member of the Suburban Council of Governments for the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. I am pleased to report that my fellow government officials and representatives have elected me the new secretary of the organization. The other officials are Broadview Heights Mayor Sam Alai as president and Lynn Hurst Mayor Patrick Ward as vice president. I look forward to furthering the interests of our city and our residents and our region before the annual RSD and enhancing our city's profile in the process. The build-out at 2245 Warrensville Center Road is ongoing. We will be presenting to the Finance Committee at its May 31st 7:00 p.m. meeting proposals regarding computer hardware, office equipment, and furniture. I would prefer, in the interest of transparency, to consider those not as separate projects but to bring them all together ultimately before the council, and it is anticipated that we will have those items at the next council meeting. I'd also like to take a moment to talk about grass in our city, and I wish I was talking about medical marijuana dispensaries, but no, I am talking about the lawns. Our building department has tagged over 300 lawns in our city for grass and weeds in excess of eight inches in height. I know a number of our neighbors, especially those who live next to some of the offending lawns, have been calling and emailing and asking when the city will be out to mitigate the nuisance. I assure you that our contract mower has the list and has been working on it since late last week, and the work continues. With over 300 lawns to cut, only some of them will be the first ones cut, and some of them will be the last ones cut, but we will get to all of them, and hopefully the property owners whose lawns they are will take whatever extra time is allowed to remedy their own lawns for themselves. And just for the record, I have mowed my lawn three times so far this year. And now for the good stuff, the Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony. The Memorial Day Parade is the official kickoff to summer here in our city, and historically it has been the city's premier event, as it will be again this year. The parade steps off on Sillsby Road on the west end of the city at 11:00 a.m. and marches across town along Sillsby to South Belvoir and then onward to the John Carroll University Campus, where a post-parade ceremony and festival will take place. Parade participants have received their assigned spots for the lineup. Some matters of note, United States Air Force flyover at 11:30 a.m. over the intersection of Warrensville and Sillsby. We have received word that it will be an Air Force F-16 that will fly over. It will be taking off from Toledo and fly over the parade in the vicinity of City Hall around 11:30 a.m.
Between 11:30 and 11:50.
11:30 and 11:50. Well, the parade is going to be about an hour long, so it may be that some of those judicial candidates at the back will really get a good view of this. Okay. Decorating station for the bikes. Oh, also Barbara, thank you. Barbara Blankfeld, thank you for your legwork in helping get the flyover done.
Oh, wow, thank you.
Yes. Decorating station for the bikes. The city, along with University Heights Library and Sports Clips, is sponsoring a decorating station prior to the parade. Kids of all ages can go to the community park at 9:30 a.m. on Memorial Day and decorate their bikes for the parade. The library staff will then assist the kids in decorating and walk them to the parade lineup area where they can then participate in the parade. So thanks once again also to Sports Clips for donating the decorations. At the end of the parade route, the city will hold its traditional post-parade festival, including ponies, the petting zoo, the bounce house, some food trucks. League of Women Voters will have a voter registration table, and Chief Rogers has arranged for the auxiliary police to have a bicycle licensing station. So for those of you who've been asking about bicycle licensure, here is an excellent opportunity, especially if you decorated your bike and rode along the parade to get your license at the end. The tribute to our fallen veterans will begin at noon or afternoon, just afternoon, depending on the length of the parade. The event will be outside the entrance of DeCarlo Hall at the southwest corner of Washington and South Belvoir. The rain location will be just inside the same entrance in the gymnasium. Speakers include Rabbi Yakov Katz of the Kalé, Father Bernie McCanniff, excuse me, of Jezu, who will deliver the invocation and addiction respectively, Kate Malone of John Carroll University, and me. The keynote speaker will be Army Major Tim Jenkins, Assistant Professor of Military Science at John Carroll University, and University Heights Barbara Blankfeld will sing the National Anthem. After the flag placement and gun salute, the University Heights Symphonic Band will play taps. The extended forecast right now calls for rain in the morning, but here's hoping the weather dries up before we line up. In anticipation of what's going to be a successful event, I would like to thank Special Projects Manager Lisa Marneck for her instrumental role in making this event a success, together with our Service Director Jeff Picorni, who too has been working tirelessly together with John Pacella and the rest of the Service Department to get things ready. I'd like to thank Joe Chuni for everything he did to get the Sillsby Road repaving project done in time for the parade, just like he said we would do. So thank you, Joe. And I'd like to thank our Memorial Day Committee, Pete Bernardo, Barbara Blankfeld, Harvey Blankfeld, Linda Bruff, Jane Evans, Robin Gernsheimer, Wendy Gernsheimer, Jerry Jacobsen, Jeff Mueller, Mike Sears, Sean Weiss, and with them, Councilman Phil Erdl. So thank you. Thank you all. Purvis Park, pool opens Saturday, holiday weekend hours, Saturday and Sunday from 1 to 8:30 p.m., and Memorial Day from 1 to 6:00 p.m. And I was over on Saturday to look around. We've got new paint, we've got new chairs, we've got new umbrellas, we've got a brand spanking new credit card machine to handle pool passes and tennis lesson payments, and we're ordering another machine just like it for the building department. So that's something to be excited about too for completely different reasons. The rain barrel workshop is tomorrow, Wednesday, May 23rd at 6:30, in the Service Department Garage. Cost is $60 for a rain barrel and free to come to just listen. The registration for purchasing a rain barrel, I believe, is closed, but this is a reminder to attend if you did register or to show up if you just want to come watch and hang out and learn. The city, in conjunction with the Cairo County Solid Waste District, will host a free seminar on backyard composting, and that will be Tuesday, June 5th at 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall. The Municipal Future Citizen Committee is convening for its first meeting on June 3rd, Sunday, at 2:00 p.m. at the University Heights Library, meeting Room 1. Windweiser is chairing the committee. Citizens who have volunteered to serve on the committee have received an extensive email from her regarding the goals of the committee, which, to paraphrase her briefly, is to evaluate the present facilities and configurations with respect to citizen needs and to hear and evaluate the anticipated wide range of opinions as to what is needed to better serve the community. Finally, Government Affairs Committee is meeting on Thursday, May 24th, 7:00 p.m. That's this Thursday, and items before the committee include the proposed tax abatement on major home renovations and additions and updating our food truck ordinance. These are housing and quality of life issues I strongly support for the betterment of our housing stock and for the betterment of our community. The abatement program will be another step in several we have taken here collectively in city government with respect to strengthening our housing stock and our neighborhoods. I unfortunately will not be able to attend the meeting, but I have a good excuse. I will be singing in the sing-out at Severance Hall this Thursday night. It's a fundraiser for the Cleveland Rape Crisis Center. Judge KJ Montgomery has been a longtime proponent and supporter of the center and of the event, and she recruited me. So it was an easy sell though for such a worthy cause. So, thank you, KJ. She's going to be singing a solo. I will not be singing a solo, but she will. And that concludes my report. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Ordinance 2018-28, Amending Codified Ordinance Section 1280.10 entitled Rental of One and Two Family Dwelling Units in U1 and U2 Districts for the Purpose of Amending the Duration of Rental Permits, Modifying the Rental Permit Fee Schedule, and Updating Appeal Procedures. This is on second reading. This, okay, it's been introduced by council as a whole, but Mr. Weisman, did you want to speak on this, or who would like to speak on this?
I'll take a crack. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody can fill in the gaps if I'm, if one I mistake the salient portions. During the ruling committee, we discussed the fact that inspections for rental permits in the city occur once every two years. It was universally, I think all of us agreed that that's not often enough. I think with the increase in the number of rentals in the city, with the increase in possibly people's per rental, we want to make sure that the building department gets in there once a year and checks it out and make sure that it's safe and everything's fine. And so I think that was the easy thing. The difficult thing was how to pay for the increased inspections, because I believe that at one point the building commissioner told us that inspections work every two years because that's all the bodies they have to do the inspection, so we need more, excuse me, more inspectors. So we're basically doubling the permit fee for a rental permit for the city and shortening the time, so it'll now be, for single-family homes, $600 per year, for a two-family home, $800 per year, and for the third floor, rental third floor, $200 per year. But I believe, and this is what I make sure I'm correct, people who until this point have gotten under the old system, they're set for the next two years for the amount that they paid, so it's going to take us, at least it'll take us two years to capture everybody, and probably, I think, a year before we start capturing people, unless somebody's permit is up in the next
That's correct.
...year, right? So I don't, I'm not going to try to ascribe a percentage to it, but it's not like everybody's going to have to pay this right away, but I think this is better for the city. I think it helps the city keep greater tabs on the people that are renting, and it's an amount that we, I believe at least, it's something that can be, the landlords can spread out over the life of a lease, over the year, so it's, if you're renting to four people and you have to pay $600 a year, it doesn't, it doesn't end up being a lot of money for each and every person, so. It came out of committee, nobody voted against it, and here we are. Thank you.
Mr. Blankfeld, looks like you have some comments to add.
Well, I would just add that the one other really substantive change made to the ordinance is to exclude arrangements where the dwelling unit is occupied by one family, and there's a definition for that in our zoning code, and where no monetary or in-kind consideration is being exchanged, and we go through a definition of that, so we exclude things like childcare or home maintenance. And this was to address a concern that had been raised over time by several residents who own homes and were allowing family members to live in the home.
Yeah, if I can, if I can expound on that, some specific situations included duplexes where, where a homeowner owns a duplex. One instance that I'm aware of where a single mother with a child lived in one half of the duplex, and the single mother's mother, the child's grandmother, lived in the other side of the duplex. The single mother would go to work, grandma would watch the kid, and we were making them file a rental application permit for grandma's half of the house. Well, we don't want to do that, so that would bring an end to that sort of arrangement. Another arrangement, that type of arrangement where that would end would be where somebody, like a parent, purchases a house, maybe they lived in it a while, or maybe they just buy it outright, and, and their kids live in it, you know, whether it's because they're going to John Carroll or just because they live here. If a parent owns a home and one of the, and another family member is living in it, well, then we're not going to count that as a rental either. So, as long as no money is actually being exchanged, there is that exception as well.
Does anybody have any further comments? Mrs. Weiss?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Are those individuals that you know of going to be contacted, the change?
Uh, perhaps. I suppose that would be something that we ought to do, or on the other hand, if they go to renew a permit, they, they should be alerted that they will not be required to file a permit under the circumstances.
Okay. I just know in those two cases that you mentioned, I think those individuals may known their displeasure.
They have, and I imagine that they're following this, so. So I don't know that we'll have to tell them specifically, they'll, they probably will be aware of it either through social media or the media or just contacting City Hall about how this resolved.
So I'll make a motion if no one else wants to speak on this, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Sims?
I'll hold off on my motion.
Very good. Mr. Sims, you have the floor.
I just didn't know if the questions came before or after the motion was on the floor.
Well, you know, we could make a motion and then debate the motion, so that, that would not be out of order.
Okay, well, I'll ask my question, but if somebody wants to second his motion, I don't care what order we go in.
Okay, well, Mr. Sims, you may proceed.
Okay. And I support this piece of legislation fully. I had some reservation about the, the fees that were being charged, but, you know, after careful consideration, I feel that they are reasonable. But I do have a question about the last piece where we are talking about penalty. And I know sometimes we do things that are customary without thinking about it at all, but this last sentence, "A separate offense shall be deemed committed each day during on or which a violation occurs and/or continues," is a little troubling to me, because something like this could mean that a violator could be looking at tens of thousands of dollars in charges, I mean, in penalties, and I'm not sure if that is the objective or the intent of council or the city, and maybe $1,000 as a ceiling is not the number, but it just seems a little draconian to put that type of language in an ordinance like this, so I, that's my comment.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Weisman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Mr. Sims' comments. That's sort of typical for the code to have, certainly to have a penalty, the idea is to give the city flexibility if someone were to just say, "Well, forget it, I'm not, I'm not doing it no matter what, do what you have to do," but I'm more than happy to sort of cap it, you know, like three times whatever the amount is, you know, we can cap it. The idea, the idea is that if, if there's no penalty provision, someone would just say, "Well, forget it, I'm not doing it," and then if you catch me, I'll just, I'll just pay, so.
No, I agree. I mean, I understand and I agree, but that was just my observation, and so I just wanted to make sure that it was on the floor.
My thought about that is, well, two things. One is, this is holdover language from the existing ordinance, so this is just language that we didn't touch, but to your point, it might be worthwhile to raise this issue with the prosecutor and see what his thoughts are about it. I think the original thinking behind the provision was probably along the lines of wanting to give the prosecutor some leverage over an offender in, in these kinds of situations, but whether it is too draconian, that may be the case, and it might be worth running it by the prosecutor to see what he thinks, and then maybe circling back.
Yeah, I would be amenable to that or even taking a vote, and if we have to come back and revise, amend that section, we could do that as well.
Yeah. Any further comments on this section or on this proposal?
I think we need to make a decision as to whether or not we're going to postpone that portion or take that out. What, what, fellow members here, what are you in favor of going?
I think what the law director was saying was that this penalty provision exists now. That's not something we're adding in for this, right? So that's, so last week, that's the way the penalty provision read, and last month, and so on. I mean, I'm more than happy to change it now to sort of an amount that makes my colleagues happier, we can come back and look at it. Mr. Sims' point, I think, is well-taken, that nobody wants to have this, this kind of section in the code that gives, makes it so somebody can get completely zinged by an oversight or something like this, but so the prosecutor needs to...
And I think if the, if the prosecutor were here, and I'm not the prosecutor, obviously, but, but I, I think that between the court that we have and the prosecutor we have, I, it would be extraordinary to find ourselves in a situation where we would be, and, and keep in mind that this, that this language is in the present version of the ordinance. If we tabled this and never returned, it still exists in the present ordinances of University Heights. It would be extraordinary to find a situation where we would be going after somebody under the present permitting law, that, that we would seek thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars ultimately, except in the most extraordinary of cases, I think. That if you had somebody who was just adamantly refusing to comply with the law despite notice after notice after notice and said, "I'm not going to pay you a rental permit fee, I don't care how much it is or how little it is, and I'm going to continue to rent to whoever I want to, and what are you going to do to stop me?" Well, you know, I, I think in situations like that where somebody brazenly and intentionally is, is breaking the law in that respect, you know, we're going, that would be treated differently and viewed differently by the courts than, than something that's merely an oversight.
But I'd be willing to just cap it at a reasonable amount that we all agree on, just so we can get it done today. Three times, three times, you know?
My recommendation, and I understand, I don't have a vote, my recommendation is that you go ahead and consider this ordinance as it's drafted today and then circle back on this issue. I can, you know, add anecdotally that the city has been sued under this ordinance in connection with a rental relationship that an individual has challenged, and that litigation remains pending. There has never been any discussion at any point in the course of that litigation about this provision. There's never been any suggestion or overture by the city of any kind that a penalty would be any more drastic or draconian as a result of the delay, the litigation being filed. So I think that's to the mayor's point, that a lot of this has to do with the prosecutorial approach and/or the law director's approach to, to the citizenry on issues like this, but it also begs the question, do we need this provision if, if, you know, that's not how we're dealing with folks? So as the mayor mentioned, it's in the ordinance now. I would suggest considering this ordinance as it's drafted and then circling back to this provision after we consult with the prosecutor.
And I don't object to that at all.
Okay. All right.
I'm going to second Mr. Weisman's motion.
Okay. Presumably, you're making that motion.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion adopted by Mr.
We pass ordinance 2018-28, Amending Codified Ordinance Section 1280.10, Total Rental of One and Two Family Dwelling Units in U1 and U2 Districts.
Okay, very good. And Mrs. Cameron is seconding.
Yes, correct.
Very good. Is there any further discussion on the proposed ordinance?
I'll endeavor to speak with the prosecutor about this, and we'll bring it up during a subsequent building committee meeting, we can talk about this. One question I have is, as we're sitting here, I don't know, I don't know if this penalty provision mirrors other, like, sections in the code. If we change this now and don't look at the other sections, it might cause a problem, so we'll give the prosecutor a chance to, to look at it and come to an evening meeting.
Yes. All right. Any further discussion on this proposal, on the motion? Well, sing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the vote?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
All right, the ordinance passes. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 2018-29, Authorizing the Transfer of Funds from the General Fund 101 to the Capital Improvement Fund 401 on Emergency. This is introduced by Mayor Michael Dillon Brennan, and as you look at this, you should peek ahead at the next item on the agenda, which is a motion to approve the purchase of three police vehicles from Lebanon Ford and an amount not to exceed $90,000, and requesting, and required supporting equipment for a total amount not to exceed $170,137. Essentially, what we have here in the proposed ordinance 2018-29 is to move $100,000 from the General Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund so that we have money on, in that budgetary line item to make the purchase that is called for in Item C on the agenda. Is there anything further I should add to that? Mr. Frederick?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, the Safety Committee did talk about this, so the Chair is ready to speak.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, yes, so Mr. Rock?
We spoke about Item B and Item C on the agenda in our safety meeting last Tuesday and two Tuesdays ago, and the recommendation of the committee was to purchase the three police vehicles, but the, with the condition that the money be in the budget for, in the Capital Improvement Fund 401. This was budgeted and approved last year by the council to buy the three police vehicles, and they were just never purchased, so this is our opportunity to do it now. At the end of the year, our prior finance director zeroed out all of our encumbrances, so that approval of the three police vehicles basically just went away as the budget met at the zero. So this is an opportunity for us to recapture that so that we could, you know, make good on our promise last year to buy those vehicles.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Does anybody up here have anything further to add? All right. We, I do want to hear from Chief Rogers about this, but rather than do it at this point, unless the council would like to hear him now, I was going to wait to call him up on the next agenda item. Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Very good. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion to pass ordinance Number 2018-29 on emergency, correct?
On emergency.
On emergency, and that's by Mrs. Pardini with a second by Mr. Rock. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Okay, well then, we'll call a vote first on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, and Mrs. Thomas on the main motion.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, and that budgetary line item will be so moved. That brings us now to Item C on the agenda. The motion to approve the purchase of three police vehicles from Lebanon Ford, an amount not to exceed $90,000, and required supporting equipment for a total amount not to exceed $170,137. We do have a memorandum in our packets from interim Police Chief Rogers, but if Chief Rogers would come up and address the council on this proposed vehicle purchase, please approach, and you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. At this time, I respectfully request consideration for the purchase of three new police vehicles, specifically two marked units and one unmarked unit through Lebanon Ford. This would be a state contract, as indicated within the dollar amounts already identified in this motion. These vehicles be purchased under state contract, as well as most of the other equipment and technology necessary for the vehicles to outfit them. Should be noted, as has been mentioned, is in 2017, we were trying to purchase three new vehicles. It was approved to purchase three new vehicles, and it was significantly needed at that time to replace three vehicles in our fleet that were in very poor condition in 2017, which obviously, the condition has continued to worsen for those three vehicles in replacement. Specifically, 7232, 7239, and 7256 currently in our fleet are in very, very bad condition, need to be replaced with these three new vehicles. These three vehicles, the new vehicles, will maintain the current fleet that we have, and also fulfill the expectation of the community for the service that we provide, which is contingent on our current fleet numbers. Should also be noted that there is a cutoff date to obtain the vehicles on the current state contract, which will require an approved requisition by May 30th. There's also up to $10,000 in trade-in value that we're looking at for the three vehicles currently in our fleet, also to include a Chevy Tahoe that's been grounded and replaced in 2016. So the total price proposed would be $160,137, includes multiple estimates. It also has the potential to be impacted up to $10,000 for the trade-in value. And with the proposed dollar amounts not to be exceeded, this will also accommodate this very lengthy and systematic process of obtaining the vehicles and the required equipment and technology, as well as the install that can take up to eight to 10 months. So with that dollar amount, it will also allow for further discussion related to police vehicle graphics. The current estimates provided are consistent with the current graphics on the vehicles, and there's been discussion that we could potentially make our graphics more distinct to our agency, so they're easily and more readily visible to those in the community providing service to. So that could impact the estimate that was originally provided, and we will have further discussions throughout the process with the State Committee and the mayor to have more distinct markings at that time.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Rogers? Mr. Rock?
I would just like to piggyback on the discussion. So this was brought before the Safety Committee. We looked at the vehicles, the paperwork you provided, the state contract, we saw them and signed it out. We talked a lot about other strategies, whether we use different cars, and this was the best that we recommended by the committee. With regard to the markings, that's one of the last things that goes on the vehicle. It's going to take several months to outfit these vehicles, but the markings are one of the last things. And I know we are going through a rebranding process right now, so we discussed in the committee to ensure that it is consistent with the branding that the committee comes up with this year, so that will be probably rolled out with these vehicles.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Any further questions or comments?
I have a question.
Mr. Sims?
And I'm just trying to understand the numbers, Chief. So we're purchasing vehicles that will total approximately $90,000, correct?
Just vehicles, without any required and necessary equipment and/or install that...
I understand that, so that's what I'm about to ask you on, the necessary equipment that will be added, and just in general, what is that?
It's quite a lengthy list that was provided, I can go through it. But it involves the computers, the MDTs, the mobile data systems, the cameras in the cars, the dash cameras, all the technology that's needed to be able to allow the vehicles to communicate, transmit, receive information.
Okay.
And the buildup of all of the light bars, radios. I can reference it, hold on one second.
No, that's perfect. I just wanted to make sure that I understood, and especially for the record. And the total of that is approximately $71,000?
That's correct. And just to further discuss that, the memo previously from Sergeant Barrow to Chief Hammond from March identifies the specific...
Yeah, I read it, but I couldn't understand it. That's why I'm trying to get clarification. And so then, you included the idea that there's a potential for almost $10,000 in trade-in?
Correct. That's the preliminary numbers I provided by Lebanon Ford with the general information of the vehicles that we have. They can't commit to a number until they actually have the vehicles. Unfortunately, you can't get those vehicles up until we get further along in the process of...
So potentially, the cost of the vehicles will be $150,000?
Potentially.
Okay. And the signage, or, I forgot what you call it?
Graphics.
The graphics. The graphics that have not been added, or that will be added, is that an additional amount not reflected in these numbers, or is that also reflected?
No, the amount of $160,137 includes all of the vehicles and all the required buildup, including graphics.
Including graphics.
Correct. Again, there was some, there was some additional space needed to entertain the discussion of providing more distinct graphics, which could impact the estimate that was provided, which is $1,500 currently for graphics consistent with what we've currently been doing over the past few years.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything further for the chief? Thank you, Chief Rogers. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the three police vehicles from Lebanon Ford, the amount not to exceed $90,000, and the required supporting equipment for a total amount not to exceed $170,137.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Rock, second by Mrs. Cameron. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the vote.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the purchase of 10 portable radios from Motorola Solutions, in an amount not to exceed $41,522.25, and update remaining portable radios by B&amp;C Communications, in an amount not to exceed $670.50 for fire department, with a total not to exceed $50,000. Chief Perko, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. These are the portable radios that we use to communicate with each other and to our dispatch. Anytime we're on an emergency incident and not inside the vehicle, we received this cache of radios, FEMA grant, that was a multi-city grant back in 2008, when we switched over to the Marx radio system. These radios have come to the end of our life, they're no longer supported with tech support, and we were able to secure eight of the 18 radios that we have through county for free, but this is to purchase the remaining 10 that we need.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions for Chief Perko? Mr. Weisman?
Yes, thank you, Chief. So you say we got, the county gave us eight radios. When was that approximately?
That was last year's, my understanding, as they were purchased, I believe, for maybe the R&amp;C. And it was a cache of radios that were programmed but never used, so all we had to do was incur costs to just reprogram them.
So that's wonderful. And those will be compatible with the 10 that you're proposing that we buy here?
Correct.
And shouldn't we have, this is not for you, Chief, but shouldn't we have sort of formally accepted those as the council, those 10 radios? You think we did?
I remember some conversation with them.
Oh, well then, I stand corrected. Well, so good, so we should have. I was right about that. Just not whether we did it. Okay, thank you, that's it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, Mrs. Weiss?
Thanks, Mayor.
Yes.
Chief, I think this is great. Can you just explain, so the 10 radios are not going to exceed $41,000, but then the 670, it doesn't equal up to 50, like, what's the 670 for? Just the...
The 670 is a different type of radio that the officer in charge carries to monitor what's going on in the city. The reason for the two different proposals are, these are on state term contracts, and one is through Motorola, and one is through Unication. So that was the two...
So that 670 is going to be like time, times 10?
Yeah, just one, one radio and 670.
Okay, so you're just saying, both of those together shouldn't be more than $50,000?
Correct.
Okay.
And to expound on that, that $50,000 represents the line item in our Capital Improvement Fund 401. We budgeted $50,000 for radio communication equipment beginning of the year as part of budget, so that's for...
Okay. Is there any further discussion, questions? Mr. Sims, did you have anything? I know you were, you and Mr. Weisman were conferring.
No, but I would suggest that, to my colleague's point, usually when dollar amounts are presented, it's accepted by council for those dollar amounts. And so the 41,522.25 plus the 670.50 usually would be the number that it was not to exceed, but I don't have any concern with it, but generally, that's the way it's presented.
Okay, so noted.
I did write the memo up with that extra amount.
No, not the six, I mean, I think we both understand what the 670 is. What we're saying is that the authority that we're giving is for you to make that exact purchase, so it should not exceed the total of those two amounts.
Correct. This was for the presumed price to also program these radios, so this offered a cushion in there.
Okay.
I was aware of a situation that incurred with the previous radios that were donated from the county. I'm not exactly sure it was before I was in this position, but I believe we were getting kicked around from different vendors to program due to various costs and other issues, so I wanted to make sure that we were able to make sure we get this program without having to come back to you.
So I would, is there a motion on the floor?
No.
Not yet.
Okay. So I would, I would move to approve the purchase of the 10 portable radios from Motorola Solutions, including program, programming in an amount not to exceed, well, the radios not to exceed 41,522.25, and updating the remaining portable radios, and for the programming of the new radios, in an amount, in a total amount not to exceed $50,000. So that would be my motion.
Okay. Kelly, do you have that? Very good. All right. We have a motion by Mr. Sims. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. Is there any further discussion, discussion on the motion? There is no further discussion. Mrs. Thomas, we call the vote on the motion.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Chief Perko.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a motion to accept bid from Ronyak Paving as the lowest and best bid, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for 2018 street improvement project with Ronyak Paving, Inc., not to exceed $722,276.00. Mr. Chuni, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We opened bids last week, and we received six bids for the annual road programs, 2018 road program. Ronyak Paving was the lowest and best bid. They performed their job in 2016 and '17. We're happy with their performance at those, so they have the annual program again. With this project, we have seven streets that'll be resurfaced. We also have the crack ceiling that we talked about in the Service Committee meeting, we added that to the project. City Hall resurfacing, the rest of City Hall's going to be resurfaced. We did kind of like this side last year, and then this side next year. Cedar and Taylor improvements are the bump outs in the sidewalk, and curb improvements up there in Cedar and Taylor. With this project, we're doing Hadley all the way to Fairmount Boulevard, and the last 250 feet is in Shaker Heights. We did bid that separately. We have, based on the low bidders prices, $14,708.50, and Shaker Heights has issued a PO for that amount, or they actually issued it for $15,000. We will bill them at the end of the project, and they'll reimburse us for that part. Doesn't make any sense for them to do that little 200 feet, it makes sense for us to do it with our project, so. This is our normal program, it's just mill and fill, pavement repairs where needed, catch basin reconstruction where needed, and I recommend we enter no contract with Ronyak.
Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Is there any, are there any questions, any discussion with regard to the 2018 road improvement program and the bid therefore?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Cameron?
Yes, I'm curious as to the streets we're going first this year?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm on Barrington Road from Cedar to Sillsby, Bradford Road from the Cork Line at Cleveland Heights to Ashers, Canterbury Road from Meadowbrook to Sillsby, Farland Road from Brockway to Sillsby, Grove Land Road from Milton to Green, Hadley from Carroll to Fairmount, and Laurelhurst from East Carroll to Milton. In my memo, there's a little map, I colored up too, that shows it on the map.
All right, and then just for the sake of completeness, also included is some crack ceiling on various streets.
Lot of streets, yes.
Right. The city, the city hall resurfacing like you were talking about, and then also some improvements at Cedar and Taylor, where we're moving the corners to make it more uniform with the corners on the other side in Cleveland Heights.
Shorten the crosswalk.
Shorten the crosswalk, yes. So that will...
A little easier to cross the street.
Yes, to make it more pedestrian friendly.
Actually, what Cleveland Heights did made it more difficult to get onto the sidewalk, to be honest. I cross there all the time.
They had an issue with the slope on their ADA ramp, it didn't meet, but you couldn't move, and the doorway was right there in the building, and they couldn't move the doorway, obviously, so they had to do that switchback to meet the maximum grade you're allowed on a handicap ramp.
Okay.
They didn't want to do it either, but the state may do it, and you see what happened. I think it's harder myself, but the slope between the streets and where the first floor, because the door was right there, same thing on the Melt side, they had an issue on that side, too, so.
Oh, so I just had a question on the crack ceiling, which I'm so happy is included, and I know that there's a multitude of streets. Did everybody bid on the same list of streets for crack ceiling?
We just bid it by the pound.
By the pound, okay.
And Jeff and I are going to go out and mark the ones that we're going to get done.
Okay.
Again, we're going to concentrate on those ones that are less than 10 years old, you know, somewhere between the probably four and 10 years old that have been resurfaced. But you get beyond 10 years, you're kind of throwing good money after bad, it's just too far gone, so if you put the money into it now, it'll last longer at the other end that we talked about.
Very good. Very good. Any further questions for Mr. Chuni, any comments? Mr. Weisman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chuni, do we have approximate dates when the work will be done?
out, we get to sign contract back. Usually that takes about a week. You've got to get their bonding in. We'll have a pre-construction meeting. I would imagine the middle of June it'll start. And it depends on his contract as well, but once it gets started, I gave him sixty days to get it all done, so.
Okay, wonderful. And where, you mentioned we use them sixteen and seventeen. You're pleased with their work, and you have a good relationship with them?
Yes, sir. Yes, they did good work.
Wonderful.
One of their owners lives in Tyler, lives on the corner of Meadowbrook and Glendon.
Oh, does he really? Oh, how about that?
So he sharpened his pencil. He wanted to come back, so. That's even better.
That's good.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll put on the signs, you know, this, this work done by, you know.
Oh, yeah. We know where you live.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Anything further? Well, do we have a motion? We need a motion, if somebody would like to make one.
I'll make the motion. I motion that we accept the bid from Roniak Paving as the lowest and best bid, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the 2018 street improvement project with Roniak Paving not to exceed seven-hundred-twenty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Purdy, a second by Mr. Sims. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Yes, I do have a question.
Okay, Mrs. Cameron, you have the floor.
I just wanted to know, can you tell us what the difference in the range was from his bid versus the next one?
Sure.
It doesn't have to be exact.
Oh, I have it exact. The little bit was seven-twenty-two, two-seventy-six. The next one was seven-seventy-four, two-oh-eight. Then seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand, four-twenty-six. Then it went all the way up to eight-hundred something, so there were six bids.
So the next one up was about fifty-three thousand?
About fifty thousand more, correct.
Yeah?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Weisman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to commend Mr. Sims for the idea you brought to council about the crack ceiling. I think it's extremely important. This is the first time I can remember us doing maintenance on some of the other streets that have been done as part of the road program, rather than just putting in new streets. It looks flashy to do new streets, doing less streets, but I think this will be better for the city, and hopefully we'll spend less money in the coming years, because we'll get more out of the, more money out of the streets that we crack seal, or more years out of them. So I think it's, I'm glad to do that. I'm glad to see that part of the road program. Thank you, Mr. Tooney, for making that.
Very important. And I would be remiss. Barrington Road resident, Mrs. Marie Hood, came to council last year and expressed her desire to see Barrington Road done when it wasn't done last year, and I'm happy to see it's on the list this year. And it's been since 1995 that it was last resurfaced, so according to this list, according to Mrs. Hood, it was even longer than that. I know that she's lived on the road, that street since 1988. I used to live on Barrington Road myself. I used to live across the street from her, so it's, I'm happy for the, our residents on that street, all these streets, but especially that street, that we are getting this done this year, so. Thank you. Anything further? All right, if there's no further discussion, Mrs. Thomas, we call the vote.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Purdy? Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron? Aye. Mrs. Weiss?
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Tooney. Okay, next item, well, no, excuse me, the next would be a motion to hold an executive session immediately following this regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal, and real estate matters. I have no such matters that I'm aware of that we need to discuss. If somebody else has something, please let me know now. We can make said motion. Otherwise, I think we can dispense with that item. If there is no motion, then we will pass that by and move on to director's reports. Finance, do you have a report?
I have no report.
Okay, Finance, thank you. Director of Law, Mr. McConville, do you have a report?
Counsel, just want to let you know that in the Epic Lifestyle case pertaining to three-eight-eight-six Sillsby, there's a hearing tomorrow morning. I'm anticipating at that time that the court will approve the receivership lien on the premises, but we'll see. I also have an update on the small cell litigation. There's been kind of an interesting procedural development. The magistrate in the case rendered an opinion that the summary judgment that was granted was not enforceable on the basis that the language in the court's opinion referenced a first amended complaint as opposed to a second amended complaint, and that therefore certain parties who were included in the second amended complaint were not encompassed by that motion, that order.
Wow.
As a result, the magistrate has asked the parties to brief that issue, and it creates some possibilities for resolution. The issue will be briefed. There's a lot going on from a strategic standpoint, but that's where the case is now, and I hope to provide you with another update in the coming months.
Mr. Weisman?
That concludes my report.
Okay. I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McConville, I have a question about the receivership case on Sillsby, in terms of go forward, what we can expect. So once the, once the, you said the receivership lien is approved, then is, then they, that's their green light to start making the improvements on the house?
No, the, the house is fully brought up to code. The building department has reviewed all of the work that's done. The court has been provided with a lot of visual evidence during the course of these hearings of the home. It looks beautiful from the pictures. All modern fixtures, the kitchen, everything just looks pristine. So the house is up to code. There, there is a family living in the home. It's currently being rented. Once the receivership lien is placed, I believe the outcome will be that the home will go up for sale. And it's likely that there will be a market for the home, because it's just up to code, so.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
It's in terrible shape right on Sillsby now.
Yeah, the process, you know, we, this was new for us. It's a statutory mechanism that we've not seen utilized prior to this, so we were, you know, kind of participating and watching very closely, and I would encourage this firm and this particular company to look for other opportunities in University Heights, because they have done exactly what they said they would do, and they've done it in the timeframes that they said they would do it in.
That's fantastic. That's good. Thank you, thank you.
So also, just to make a point, I know this home was not in the state of disrepair of some of the properties that we've seen, but I do think that this provides evidence that these homes that are in really bad shape are not necessarily a total loss to the community. They can be repaired.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, I think that there are a lot of variables, and I'm not in the real estate business, so I don't, I don't have the ability to make any kind of judgment like that, but certainly there are opportunities for rehab, and this does prove that point.
Might it make sense to have that law firm? I know they do, I'm kind of familiar with them. I know they do other of this stuff. Might it make sense, or would it be out of bounds to have them come here and just sort of give them five minutes to present on it? So when maybe there's another neighbor, and I know you need a willing neighbor to sort of engage them, right? They don't just, they're not Superman. They can't come in on their own, so if, if we're able to offer them a little bit of publicity, maybe someone else in the city could have that.
Yeah, I think Epic Lifestyle is owned by a gentleman named Kenneth Tyson, and I know that he is looking at other opportunities on the east side. Certainly, I could invite Matt Yorkevich, who's the lawyer, to speak if you'd like to hear from him. I think they feel like they've been treated fairly by our building department, so I don't think they would have any hesitation to do more work in the city if they found the right opportunity.
I mean, to, to Mr. Sims's point, this is a very big deal, right? We've, we've, we've authorized many houses to be taken down, and we're sort of at our wits' end of what to do. We can't just let it go, but I mean, this provides a mechanism where...
This is an instance where we had a nuisance property that now has market value that's commensurate with other properties in the neighborhood.
That's fantastic. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you concluded your report as well, so that moves us on to public safety. Interim Chief Rogers, do you have a report?
Thank you, good mayor. Reference the line striping project that I identified at the last council meeting. It is a piggyback project. Shaker Heights, it's the third year of its three-year contract. They did finish Shaker Heights, and they were planning to start University Heights last night. As indicated prior, this type of work is heavily impacted by weather, so they will be starting the line striping project tonight at University Heights as long as the weather allows for it. They're estimating approximately three weeks it's going to take to complete the line striping, and the work will be done between 7:00 PM and 5:00 AM, consistent with the work that was done over the last two years. That completes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, okay, we have a question here. Mr. Weisman?
I have a question. The intersection at Fairmount and Green, if you're on Green heading, would that be south towards Fairmount? Can you picture it? So there's a, there's a left-only lane, right, and there's a...
You're talking about at the intersection?
At the intersection. So you're on, sitting on Green Road, and you're turning on the Fairmount and going straight. Is that, is that ours?
That is not. That is Shaker Heights.
So Shaker would determine the light configuration and the lane configuration for that?
Correct.
Okay.
If there's an issue, I can address it and pass along to Shaker Heights if needed.
Right, so the, the far right lane is a right turn only, and the middle lane is left turn and straight. So if you're going straight, you have to wait for the people in front of you to turn left before you can go straight, right? Before they painted that right arrow there. I used to zoom around in the right lane and go by. Now the Shaker Heights police sit there. Since that's a right only, they ticket people. Not that this happened to me, but it seems to me like the far right lane should be right or straight, because if you're, if I'm going straight and somebody's turned left, I have to wait one or two lights for them to turn left. It doesn't...
Correct. I can follow up with Shaker Heights and find out some more information or the justification for that.
It looks like Mr. Tooney might have some insight on this. Can we recognize Mr. Tooney?
Yes, Shaker Heights is in the process of doing exactly what you said. They're going to make it a right and a straight lane, and the left, the middle lane's going to be a left turn only. Actually, the signs are already up there, and they're backed. I think they're waiting for the striping to get done, and they're, it is their signal, but yeah, they've been looking at that intersection for a while. They're going to do exactly what you...
How about that? Okay.
That's how it was, and they changed it.
Right.
They just changed it.
Sorry, sorry.
All right.
But this right there, they'll take a bag off.
Thank you, thanks. Chief, way to go.
Way to go.
Problem solved. Making changes.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Okay, next, still part two of public safety, would be interim chief Perko. Chief Perko, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Early in January, I had talked with the mayor and Mr. Tooney about the idea of an emergency vehicle traffic light in front of the city hall apron here. During rush hour, traffic especially, it's extremely difficult to have any vehicles exit our apron, especially emergency vehicles. And so Mr. Tooney was nice enough to draft up a proposal for his traffic light that came in, I believe around like thirty-five thousand, that we obviously did not budget for this year. So I wanted to thank him for our Plan B with the new striping that you see outside. So if you see that, that's where that kind of stemmed from. Hydrant flushing has been completed throughout the city. If anybody calls, you can tell them that we're done until fall. We're going to be painting the hydrants on Sillsby for the Memorial Day Parade, and then we'll get a plan together to repaint many of the hydrants in the city throughout the summer. About half of the ones are in need of sanding and repainting. I'm waiting to hear back about possibly some community volunteers to do that. I'll provide some more information as that comes available. I also wanted to announce the re-establishment of the fire department's involvement with teaching CPR classes. University Hospitals has agreed to assist us in teaching our firefighters to become certified instructors. We currently have a few of them now. We're going to have a couple more come on board. And then we locked in two dates, one in June and one in August with the library, and we'll conduct de-train there. At the library, we'll do some of the posting for the advertisement of those dates. And last, the rescue squad that I had come to a few months back is under production. It is nearing completion. They just painted it and are working out doing decals. We'll probably be doing a pre-delivery inspection sometime in June. In the meantime, I had spoken with the mayor about writing for the BWC grant for the power cut load system to see if we can get that purchasing installed for free before we dip into the capital award.
Good.
That's my report.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Does anybody have any questions, issues for the chief? All right, very good. Thank you, sir. Next up is public service, Mr. Pecorni.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sir.
Approximately a week ago, Assistant Service Director John Pacella and myself were honored to attend Tree City USA Awards for the Northern Ohio District. It was held this year in Avon Lake, the city of Avon Lake. It was quite a nice ceremony. It was special because this year, the city of University Heights received its award for forty consecutive years. Quite an honor, forty years. We were second with Cleveland Heights in the number of years, and only one city. The city of Lakewood has a designation longer than us at forty-one, so we are right at the top of the list in Northern Ohio for Tree City awards. So I will, this will be displayed in city hall downstairs, and we have another plaque somewhere that also displays a small maple leaf for each year we've received the award.
Yes. We are in the process of relocating that plaque, as we have the maple leaf affixed to it, so we do understand it's somewhere. But with this being a milestone year, did you want to add about the other signs?
Oh, yes. In addition to that, because it is our fortieth year, we thought it would be a nice show of pride if we put up some signs around town, designating the Tree City Award, and has a gold banner on it indicating our forty years of being designated a Tree City. So we will see those installed. There should be six of them installed at key points around town. You'll see them out there.
Yes, Mr. Sims?
That's very, that's awesome. That's a great idea. It goes along with everything that we want to do to brand the city and, you know, differentiate it. Do we have the ability, the capability or capacity to do the banner signs?
Banner signs?
On utility poles or whatever, you know, what I mean?
Yeah, like the flares.
Like the ones we have at Cedar Taylor, or that Cleveland Heights has at Cedar Taylor?
Yeah, I know about Cedar, but I...
And they hang down vertically.
I believe, maybe, and, and Mr. Pecorni, perhaps you can enlighten us, but I believe that that's a process involves working with First Energy about permission to use the poles?
Correct, it does.
Okay.
And right now, the city does not have any banners or mounts for banners assigned to us.
Would we be able to use the same poles that we had permission to attach the snowflakes to? Or is that only in the winter time for that season that we have that permission?
I do not know.
Okay.
We would have to approach First Energy and ask if we could use that for the both uses.
Okay, because I, I know that one of the things I learned, and I know several of us up here, last year when the snowflakes were first installed, we wondered why certain poles were skipped, and it's because CEI approved certain poles but not others. So we put a snowflake on every pole they approved, apparently. But it may be that, it may be worth looking into, that if they've approved for that use, maybe we can piggyback this other idea. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. Wiseman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we approved John Carroll, they had their, was it last year they had their big shindig and we approved them to hang banners on? Did they have to get CEI's permission as well or did we? They did?
They did.
They did.
They had permission. They got it, I think, before they came to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Pecorni?
Nothing else.
Okay. Well, thank you once again for everything you're doing this week. I have somewhere here, you know, your big master list of all the things on top of all the ordinary things that you do from week to week that keep you occupied otherwise. So thank you once again.
Thank you.
For helping make this week the success it's going to be this weekend. Okay. All right. Next is Building Commissioner, Mr. McReynolds.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. We called the CAT company out to look at our generator. This is the generator that backs up City Hall and the fire department. It's had some problems that we've been aware of, but they were brought to our attention rather abruptly once we installed the new server. The CAT company manufactured the generator, so they've come out and they've noticed some problems that weren't discovered prior to their visit, which they've been able to correct. Prior to this, we tested the generator on the weekends and found that it was carrying an entire load, which it shouldn't have been doing. Also during that time, it was causing interruptions in our power here at City Hall, was causing voltage spurts, and we also found that one of the controls there had lost its ability to control the load, which all that's been corrected. What this does is it enables us to test the generator during the week when we are here and also to eliminate the need for calling out emergency repairs, which cost a lot more on the weekends than they do during the week. So this was a good move. It took care of a lot of problems that we had with the generator and hopefully from this point on, we'll have CAT doing regular maintenance on this, which will anticipate problems before they happen. As Mayor mentioned, we are very busy right now, grass cutting. This happens every year about this time. Also, in addition to that, we have a lot of residential permits coming in, but we're very intent on keeping the grass cut. So if people mention to you about grass, please have them call the building department directly rather than the mayor or some other office where it has to be relayed to us. The sooner we get that complaint, the sooner we can check to see if it's been tagged or not. And for the next month or so, we're going to be very, very busy on grass, just to let you know. And we've started cutting. Yes?
Okay. Question regarding the grass. You mentioned the three on the lawn and you guys are going to be working diligently on that. One lawn in particular is 3761 Northwood, I believe it's owned by the city and there's been a couple complaints by residents on that street to have that cut. And when I looked up the tax records, the city does own this, so shouldn't that just be part of our normal grass cutting in addition to the park and any other city?
Good question. Actually, I need to investigate this situation. It is owned by the city, one of several lots that are done by the city. And at one time in the past, it was cut by the service department. However, the service department has now been adding the extra duties to cut the new park that we just had and the park coming up. So I think it was a couple of years ago now, it was given to us to assign to our regular crew that cuts our lawns, north coast landscaping.
So that's a regular grass cutting lot?
Yes, it's considered a regular cut because it's vacant and it's...
Okay. Because it just hasn't been, that's why I'm bringing that up.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, we gave a host of tickets to our landscaper today. He comes in twice a week, Tuesdays and Fridays, so he came in today, he'll come in again on Friday and hopefully it'll be cut before Friday. At least, yes.
Okay. Right, if I may interject and I'll add this, we discussed this at length this morning at our directors' meeting and because of the resources and capability of the service department at present with the equipment and personnel they have to do grass cutting is at its peak. It's at its capacity. So additional grass cutting of city-owned lots right now does fall to, as Mr. McReynolds said, to the building department and the mower that we contract with there. But what I have urged Mr. McReynolds to advise our mower is that any city-owned lot should take precedence to any of the nuisance lots going forward, that any time a city lot is on the list compared to somebody who's been tagged, our lot should be done first simply as a matter of taking care of our own lots and making sure our lots are in order before we're mitigating the nuisances of residents who have not yet mowed their lawns. So that situation hopefully should not recur.
Absolutely.
I too have received the numerous complaints from residents on Northwood and I hear them. And if you've received them too, well, I imagine others have as well. And I don't blame them because the city ought to do it and it should have been done already, but it will be done.
Thank you. I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Sims.
On grass cutting with the contractor that we have, are they, is there a specification to how low the grass should be cut?
No. No, not that I know of.
The reason that I ask that question is I've called in a number of lots, okay? Not this year, yet, but I've called in a number of lots and what happens is they don't get cut very low. And so a week or two later, they look exactly like they looked before and it's to the benefit of the contractor. So I'm just thinking that we should consider some type of instruction to the landscaper about how low we want these lawns cut.
I see your point. Because if he's cutting them higher, makes more business for him.
Right.
Yes.
And this year, grass is growing fast.
A lot of rain.
Because of the rain. It really is growing fast.
And I get your point, but I might balance that against the idea that when it comes to better lawn care, that when you take too much off grass that is long, you run the risk of killing the grass altogether. And I don't want, we don't want to be responsible for having done that.
We don't want to be responsible for that, but that's not the situation that I'm referring to.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure.
And I get my lawn cut weekly, so you know, I know, you know, that you don't want to cut it down to the surface. The other part of the question, or another question I have about the lawns is when we ticket a property, if it's cut before the landscaper gets there, then they just move on to another property? Is that how that works?
Yes, that's correct. Actually, we have two fail safes. We tag the property, we come back in three days as per ordinance, and if it's cut, then we remove that from the list. We just destroy that, that tag. And then we give the tag for the uncut properties to the landscaper. He picks them up in our office. If he goes out and he finds a cut, he goes ahead, moves on and destroys that.
Okay.
Thank you. Cheer well.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Cameron.
Mr. McReynolds, given the fact that you've got 300 lawns to look at, have you, is there any room in the budget to increase the number of people you have working to...
Well, I think we've been discussing that and that might bring me to the point of the rental program because we're looking to institute that shortly. And it's been mentioned and discussed that we're going to need administrative help as well as inspector help. And the inspector I have in mind would be able to fit in all these slots. He won't be doing just rentals. He'll be doing grass studying when we need it, or grass debating, rather, and property maintenance. And we hope to get an individual who's willing to continue his education and get more licenses and become more valuable to us. So that's our plan and we've been discussing it, you know, administratively, we're going to try to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you.
On another note, I might mention that the Belfair Community Projects are going ahead. The floor has been poured for the garage addition and the concrete block walls are almost up. The ramp has been poured for building D and that's nearing the stages where they're about ready to put on the handrail and finish that up. So it's progressing nicely. And that's about all I have.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. McReynolds? All right. Thank you. Next is the Community Development Coordinator, Mr. Grogan Myers.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for introducing the Heritage Home Program event, the Rain Barrel event tomorrow. We had, like the mayor said, we had a great turnout for the Heritage Home Program, over 60 people attended. And while I don't have the solid numbers yet, anecdotally from Trudy, our Heritage Home Program liaison, she said that so far, they've had an uptick in the number of technical assistants and site visits requested by our residents. So that's encouraging going into the construction season here. In a development that the mayor had shared at the last council meeting, we were working or are working with the county, trying to touch base with delinquent property tax owners earlier in the process, trying to prevent some of these foreclosures and tax leads from happening. So what that entailed was I mailed a letter out to about 65 homes here in the city who were early on in their delinquencies in an effort to, one, make them aware because we have come across situations where tax mailing addresses are incorrect, they're going to the incorrect address or they're not being forwarded property or something to that effect. So reaching out and just letting property owners know that they are delinquent if they weren't aware already and encouraging them to touch base with the county treasury to either set up a payment plan or pay the delinquent taxes involved. This is similar to the rental letter that was sent out per the updated ordinance that you had passed several meetings ago, but just targeting more the owner-occupied homes that just somehow might have slipped through the cracks. So trying to take more holistic view of tax delinquency here in the city and trying to take a more personal touch in approaching those situations. In addition, I had emailed you guys about the CDBG application period has come looping as of Wednesday, last Wednesday evening. It is due on June 15th, so a very tight window. And in addition to that, the grant period would be from July 1st to December 31st. So like I said, very tight window kind of all around and that's in part due to when the federal government passed their budget. So we are currently working through the process of deciding what project we'll be applying for, but in anticipation of this tight timeline, we held our first public meeting back on, I believe it was April 19th, knowing that this would be coming eventually. So the feedback is available online for anyone to view and certainly encouraging people to continue providing feedback in the meantime. But at the next meeting, we will be coming to you with an emergency resolution of support for the application, whatever that project is, to be determined to meet that timeline for the application due, June 15th. And finally, I am in the process of working on the housing survey for Councilwoman Weiss and the community reinvestment area that's being considered currently, so I will have a draft to you tomorrow. We're, I've been working on that diligently, so it'll be a rough draft and something to be continually worked on.
Yes, and if I can add a couple of things, Patrick and I have been back and forth on some of the particulars on the CRA over the last, the proposed CRA over the last few weeks, so a couple of weeks anyway, at least. Well, a few weeks, you know, so we are right about where we want it to be to take it to committee and to comment further on the grant application and the emergency resolution. Technically, it's not required that the council do the emergency resolution and support prior to filing for this grant. However, what it does do is by having that in place already when we file, well, one, we can note it and two, if our grant is approved, we don't have to call back for a special meeting this summer to then do an approval. So this is an effort to avoid having to call you back for a special meeting during the summer on that issue. So, because we want, I want to be optimistic that we will get our grant approved.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Any questions for Mr. Grogan Myers?
Yes, I have one.
Mrs. Cameron.
Yes. Mr. GM, as far as the block grant goes and you said that unfortunately I didn't make the April meeting, but do you have some particular ideas that are ready to go?
Well, we do. We do have a couple of ideas. I don't necessarily want to, we haven't settled on just one. There is one that's probably leading the others. And the thing is, is if I announce it and then we don't do it, well, then we have created an expectation that then isn't met. And if I say what the other one is, well, then we've really compounded the problem because we're only going to be able to apply for one of them. And then the other one will say, why didn't you pick us? And then, so...
So at what point will you be, after making a decision?
At what point do we have to make our decision, Mr. Grogan Myers? Pretty soon here, by the deadline, which is...
June 15th.
June 15th.
And if we're coming before you on the June 4th meeting, I believe it is?
Yes.
We will have a decision.
By then?
By Wednesday at noon, because that's when we have to have our deadline in for...
Okay.
Yeah, so I've been batting back and forth with Patrick, the relative virtues of two different ideas in two different parts of our city. And if you allow me that, I'd love to just say, leave it at that.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
You can say that. That's my go-to stop here from...
All right, so, okay, okay.
But I want to remind you guys that we had set aside some funds for civic affairs under Mr. Rock's tenure, right?
They got erased with the budget.
Are you, are you talking about Cedar Taylor?
Yes.
Okay.
So if there's anything that could be utilized in that area, don't forget those funds will be available.
Well...
Of course, you know, this is a precursor for something else I'm going to ask you about later.
Okay.
I have something to do with some ice cream.
Uh-huh, well, well, the food truck committee is, well, the food, not committee, excuse me, the food, the proposed food truck legislation is something that's going to be discussed at the Thursday governmental affairs meeting that...
I think you hear quotes around the phrase "food truck."
Oh, food truck, you know, well, I don't know if we need to have a...
Bicycle.
Well, no, we're looking at comprehensive food truck legislation that could include the bicycle. I mean, we're looking at some of our surrounding communities, but also the proponent of the, of the, of the ice cream trike did go out on social media in several places and expressed his dismay that upon further review of crunching the numbers, he didn't think it would be profitable for him to proceed, but thanking all of us for considering that. All the same, we are still looking at the food truck issue as something here for university, as something we'd like to see. I mean, I for one would love to see when we do our Thursday night concerts throughout the summer and granted, we may not get it done for this summer, but for some other summer, that when we have these free concerts from 7:00 to 8:30 over at the John Carroll Quad or wherever we do them, that we would have food trucks set up.
Maybe somebody could drive by. You could drive by.
Food truck people are happy to show up. They don't need a lot of notice.
No, no, I know that, but I don't know that our president ordinances allow that. Now, that doesn't mean that we, that it couldn't just happen, I suppose, but you know, we're trying to do it by the book here.
Yes, yes.
Yes. So, all the same, all the same.
That's a good question.
Yes, and, and, okay, and as to your Cedar Taylor point, this administration is committed to seeing improvements done at Cedar Taylor, whether it's through this program or another. So we will not be forgetting about Cedar Taylor, no matter what we ultimately do for this proposal. We have pushed, we have pushed Cedar Taylor improvements, the city has previously, as a subject for these funds and have been rejected previously. So, so it may not be the project that we seek to do this time around, but there are other things we can do at Cedar Taylor in spite of that. And I know that this council has been committed to and has previously stated its commitment and allocated funds previously towards improvements at Cedar Taylor and we are interested in seeing that too. In fact, it's one of the reasons why we specifically added some Cedar Taylor improvements to the repaving project that we did this time around. That was something that Mr. Grogan Myers and I approached Mr. Chuni about to make sure it was included in this year's proposal because originally it wasn't in the draft.
Yeah, we...
Well, that's why we have drafts and that's why we look them over, so...
I have...
Yes, Mr. Wiseman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Grogan Myers...
Mr. Grogan Myers, in the past, we have been somewhat limited in use of CDBG funds because the city is not an entitlement community, there were certain areas which were, are we bound by that this time?
Yes.
Okay, and that's obviously informing your decision about the different types of projects that you're looking at.
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that, I didn't know whether this money was unfettered or whether it was just sort of specific.
Nothing's changed with regards to the program.
Okay. And in terms of the two things that you mentioned, one is the Heritage Home Loans, that the restoration society?
It is.
And the taxes that you were talking to people about the tax, if you could keep tabs on those things?
Yes.
Because I think that's very important for us to see, not only your efforts, but sort of how the program works, how many people, I like the breakdown we got from the Heritage Home stuff before when we first started talking about this, but it'll be nice to look at this stuff as time goes by, the results of efforts. I just want to commend the administration, I've been on council five years, this is the first time we've had so many people show up for a meeting for the Heritage Home Loans. It's an incredible program.
Yeah.
You get, get tomorrow money on a very, very low interest rate, and they give you assistance, and they give you all kinds of help. Why we haven't been screaming this from the rooftop for the last five years, I don't know, but sixty people at any council meeting where we're not talking about chickens, I think is a fantastic thing.
Well, yes, we, I mean, we had more people here for that than we did for the chickens, if you can believe it.
Yes.
And we also didn't have any space taken up by the cameras, so, so if you can believe it, that whole area was filled, nearly all the chairs that were up here were moved out there, all the chairs from the basement were brought up here, and we still had people standing, that's how many people we had in this room.
That's, that's great, I'm glad to be doing it, because people will take advantage, and though, our residents will be saving tons of money...
They will.
... improving their houses, which is both things that we want on council, that's great, so I'm very, very pleased, thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers, thank you.
Thank you, and I also want to commend Mr. Grogan Myers for, for his work in, in working with Heritage Homes for getting the word out, you know, between social media. Heritage Homes had its own direct mailer, we prepared a direct mailer that I signed that we sent out in the form of a, it looked, it was in the form of a mayoral letter, had been in the form of a postcard that went everywhere, that said save the date, get out here, and we got people here, we got people here, and, and, and much of that, a lot of that's strength of the program, of course, but a lot of it's also because Mr. Grogan Myers made sure that people knew about it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, so that brings us to council committees, building, Mr. Wiseman. Okay, civic information, Mrs. Cameron?
No report.
Finance, Mrs. Partey?
Thank you, Mayor, we have a meeting Thursday, May thirty-first, this is of the Finance Committee of Council, we'll be looking at Finance Department updates, an update on the 2017 audit, and we will add discussion about another potential audit. Just to delve into our system a little more, we will review the salary schedules and see about updating that, costs of the City Hall rented space, a transfer and advance ordinance, and the kinds of reports City Council would like to receive from the interim finance director.
Seven P.M.?
Seven P.M. in the conference room, okay?
Okay.
May thirty-first, last day of the month.
It's a Thursday night.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
And I know Mr. Frederick plans on being there, so...
I guess I have to, right?
Well, we certainly appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Partey, Governmental Affairs, Mrs. Weiss?
Thank you, Mayor, so there will be a meeting on May twenty-fourth, discussing, which the Mayor just stated, tax payments, and if you want to change the tricycle to food trucks, maybe we should just talk beforehand.
Okay, we can, we can certainly talk before then. Very good, thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Erdl, Recreation?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, Safety, Mr. Rock?
Yes, Mayor, we met as a committee two weeks ago to discuss a lot of different initiatives. The police chief followed up with us on the Office of Community Policing, we'll be touching on that in the next few weeks, I'm sure. We talked about some of the capital improvements, which we approved today, so that was discussed in the meeting. We also talked about what the Office of Community Police would do, discussed the police presence in social media, what platform to be beneficial to the community. They also discussed from the Fire Department side, the potential new fire truck for next year, which could actually go on lease, they have fifteen-year lease options, so you don't have to necessarily pay a million dollars upfront.
Mm-hmm.
So that is incredible for our budgets, we'll discuss that as that moves on. I think by the end of the year, we want to continue this conversation, because they're going to have their committee in place to review that piece of equipment. What else did we discuss? I think there was basically, oh, in the lockbox, that was approved, we're going to move forward with the lockbox, we're going to start with twenty-five, thirty-five different lockboxes, it's within the mayor's spending authorities, so those will be purchased soon. There's a form which you can fill out, go to the Fire Department and get a form, fill it out, you have to pay, it's like the small amount, the reader, thirty-five dollars somewhere in there to cover the cost of the lockbox.
Yes, I believe Chief Perko is looking at an initial order of twenty-five lockboxes to start out the program, see what kind of interest areas, twenty-five is also where we get our first price break, so we're able to sell these at the, at the low, low price we're talking about.
We actually have a purchase order already ready for that.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock, and thank you, Mr. Frederick. Okay, next, Service and Utilities, Mr. Sims?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, Committee of the Whole, Mrs. Partey?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
All right, if there is no other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Cameron, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Erdl. Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman? Aye.
Mr. Sims? Aye. Mrs. Scotty? Aye. Mr. Erdl? Aye. Mrs. Cameron? Aye. Mrs. Wiseman? Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, we'll see you at the pool, we'll see you at the parade, have a great holiday weekend.